Welcome everyone to the Board of Education meeting, February 14th. Are we in compliance with open meeting laws?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Will you please call the roll?
Right.
Here.
Wyman.
Here.
Carolyn.
Here.
Herzog.
Here.
Karen.
Here.
Sinaji.
We have a quorum. Wonderful. And now would you all join me, stand, to say the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I'd like to invite Michelle Last to the table to tell us what's happening at Oshkosh North.
Thank you for having me. Quite a few things are happening at Oshkosh North. So we just finished up our Sasquatch week. And we just had our winter formal last week. Students had a lot of fun. We got a lot of compliments from our DJ of how polite our students were at our dance. So they, our DJ usually says that they don't do DJing for high schools. However, Oshkosh North is one that he is always welcome to doing because of how polite and respectful our students are. So that was a big kudo to them. Our boys' basketball team is number one in the FBA right now. Our forensics team did great at their last meet. We do have our Matilda coming up this week. We have Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, our musical at the Grand Opera. We also just had our Adaptive Sports League. They had floor hockey that they just finished up the last game yesterday. They played extremely hard and they had a hard-fought third quarter for that. So it was a lot of fun watching the students in that and then also seeing them in school and being excited to say, "We saw you there," and how much fun they have. We have the All Strings City Orchestra Concert coming up on February 24th at Oshkosh North. We have our Black History Month Assembly coming up on February 29th. And all of you are invited, as well as the public. It is from 10:00 to 11:00 in our fieldhouse. So our Black Student Union right now has been working very hard in organizing that and preparing for it. We have our Valentine's Dance coming up for our students with significant disabilities. Coming up, actually ends up being March 1st, just due to scheduling conflicts, but that's exciting. Also, our English 1 teachers have been working really hard on their Common Formative Assessment. They're meeting, looking at the data, meeting with students, spending that small group instruction time, meeting with them during our instruction, our Excel time. And right now, for October, they had an 18% increase in what those scores were. And then November, December, 13%. So teachers are also seeing that, not just in the English areas, but also social studies and other content areas, that the payoff of all of that hard work in seeing those scores raised is also helping them in those other content areas. So a lot of hard work going into that and seeing the payoff in that, so.
Awesome. That's great.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks for sharing.
Okay, land acknowledgement?
Yes, as we gather today, we would like to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we are on the ancestral homelands of the Ho-Chunk Nation and the Manhawari tribe of Wisconsin, who lived along the western shores of Lake Winnebago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its border. We acknowledge that these indigenous sovereign communities, who have stewarded this land throughout the generations and pay respect to their elders, past and present. And we welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship of these lands.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the approval of agenda. And I understand that Charlotte, we would like to put you after your report on West with your mental health report. Is that okay with everyone?
It's fine with me.
Okay. Any other changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay. Marvelous. Thank you very much. Board President's Report. I got to start today off in a very wonderful way by attending Merrill Elementary, which is a Merrill Elementary, and Webster Elementary. And they had a heart-to-heart read-a-thon. And it was just the most inspiring time. There were classes, there were breakout groups throughout the morning. Dr. Coleman read a book to the group. And there were songs. And it was just a tingly kind of moment because all the kids were so participatory and so appreciative. And you could just tell that the love of reading is really making a difference in their lives. So that was very, very exciting. And now we have retirement recognition. We have six today. The first one is Paula Dillon, science teacher at Oshkosh North. She's been there since 1995. Daniel Dunn, Dean of Students at Carl Trager, since 1998. Gail Hollis, Cross-Categorical Teacher Assistant at Franklin, since 2002. Tracy Krieger, Grade 4 Teacher at Franklin Elementary, since 1995. Robert Reese, Science Teacher and Social Studies Teacher at Perry Tipler, since 2000. And Stacy Reese, Grade 2 Teacher at Jefferson, since 2000. Does anyone have any words of acknowledgement they would like to say? Dr. Herzog.
Thank you. On a personal note, when I was employed in the central office here, I had an opportunity to interact a good deal, especially with Paula Dillon, Dan Dunn, and Bob and Stacy Reese, and to a lesser degree perhaps at Tracy. When I saw this list of retirees, I couldn't believe that they were ready for retirement, as they seem awfully young to me. But I just want to acknowledge the contributions they've made to the students, the families in our community, over, in most cases, at least 20 years, and thank them for the positive impact they've had on our students. These are tremendous people and they will be deeply missed. Not only has Dan Dunn been a Dean of Students, but he's overseen summer school. He's been a coach. And these people have had great impact on the lives of our young people. And so I just, again, want to wish them the very best as they transition in retirement, but also remind them that we are always open to have them come back and visit us, or maybe even substitute. So thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to give a shout-out to Mr. Dunn, quick. Both of my daughters have him. And he's worked with both my daughters. And he's made a tremendous impact at their school for a long period of time. So I just wanted to especially thank him for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Reese, who kept all of my kids interested in science. And sometimes that's very difficult. And he was a wonderful, wonderful teacher. So thank you to all of our retirees. Okay, Superintendent's Report.
All right. Well, I'll kick it over to Charlotte to be able to let us know what's going on with the Wildcats.
Yes. So what's going on Wildcats? It's been a while, so got all sorts of things. So starting off, we had Bucks Leadership Day. This was back in December, actually. But students, a group of student council students, they go and they get to interact with people who help the Bucks team. They have all sorts of volunteers from all over the state that come and teach students some leadership skills. They have breakouts. They get to know people. Play some games, have fun. And then they get to go to a Bucks game later that night. So super fun. I didn't go this year, but I've been other years, and it's a wonderful experience. We had our holiday concert. So we had Sounds of the Season and the Combined School Concert that we do every year for students and staff. It went super well. In the bottom picture, you can see one of my friends, Jackson, playing the electrical guitar for a transatlantic orchestra piece. Super-duper fun, and everybody loved it. Then we had our musical, Chicago, the teen version. Yes. And so just a congrats to everyone in Pitt and the cast. The show went absolutely amazing. It was a ton of fun. I was in Pitt. It was amazing. And we had great feedback and great attendance. We just had Snow Blaster Week last week, so it was an awesome event. I'm sure all of you guys are fairly familiar with the different events. So you can see log toss up there, on top. Chucking logs, sawing logs, all sorts of stuff. And on the bottom, we have the dance. Boys swim. The season has ended. They must stay by point oh three seconds. They were super close, super close. So congrats to them. Girls' and boys' basketball. The boys had a game, or have a game in two days at Nina. And then at Hortonville, the season is almost over for them. And girls have a game at Nina tomorrow. For wrestling, eight boys are moving on to sectionals. And state is yet to come, but I'm sure we'll have a couple people headed there. We had our second blood drive on February 2nd. Seventy-eight kids signed up. Sixty-four units of whole blood were collected. And that is up to 192 lives that can be saved in the community. So super important. Yeah, so thank you to the students for donating. I threw this in there because Eva asked me to, but here's a few photos from Sasquatch Week that Mrs. Last talked about. And then for upcoming events, we have ACT testing for juniors on March 12th and 13th. So currently, they are having their W-hours for preparation tips and tricks. We also are currently celebrating Black History Month. And so currently in our hallways, instead of pop music or music you might hear on the radio, we have music by Black artists. So we've got Michael Jackson in there. You have James Brown, all sorts of people. We also have a quote of the day from important Black figures. And the first week of February, we also had WR lessons all week on MLK and the amazing work that he did. And then, as Mrs. Last mentioned, we also have the All-City Orchestra Concert coming up. So all high school, middle school, and elementary string students will be part of that. There are some pop songs, classic. And I won't spoil our finale, but everybody gets to play in that. So it's pretty fun. And that is all I have.
All right.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Charlotte. So then we'll transition now into the mental health report. So just from a board standpoint, just a reminder, as we've brought on student leaders to be part of our board, we've asked them to get some feedback from their peers about important topics to be able to bring to the board, do a little bit of research, and, you know, just help support the leadership. So both Charlotte and Eva have done a great job over the last couple months of compiling data, working with our principals, and working with Director Kamer, just in this report. So I just want to thank you, Charlotte, for all the extra work that's certainly gone into this. And so, yeah, so that sets the stage for what you're about to hear. So Charlotte will provide that, and Eva wasn't able to make it tonight. And then Mr. Kamer is here also to help support and take any questions as they come up. So Charlotte.
All right. Thank you. So as you mentioned, this topic does come from student feedback in and of itself. At the beginning of the year, both Eva and I kind of emailed our student councils. We emailed, talked with friends. We're like, hey, what are some things that you would want brought up? And this was by far probably the top mentioned issue. So that is why we have that today. All right. So just a quick heads up, there is a couple sensitive topics. We are aware that not all students chose to participate. You'll see that later. But we did not have a super high proportion of students participating. And some students may not be honest. They may say things that are untrue, for whatever reason. So the data is not 100% accurate, but it's fairly accurate for the proportion that did participate. So the main points here, we're going to talk about student participation, trusted adults, widespread challenges, ways to help the students, and about educating more than our students. So getting into student participation. So as you can see, 32% of freshmen refused to take the survey, whereas 49% of juniors refused. We also, the orange portion on those graphs are kids that were absent that day. But the drop from 58% of freshmen taking the survey to 34% of juniors is quite a drastic change. And it's obviously an issue for whatever reasons they decide not to take it. But nonetheless, as they go through high school, less and less kids are taking these surveys. We do know that ESL students may not be assessed based on their English skills, so they may be part of the refused category, depending on how that works out. But that does not account for such a large drop in numbers. And then here, for the 2021 North and West Survey, so all high school students, we only had 64% of students participating in this survey. While that is over half, it's not great. You can see the rating there is fair, between 51 and 69%. Obviously, we want all kids to be participating in this. It's why we offer it to all kids. But we know they aren't, and there are reasons behind this. So some reasons that participation decreases. Some students believe that these survey results are completely anonymous. And by that, what I mean is, there are surveys where kids will answer a certain way. They might get flagged. And they're called down to the office to talk with someone from Samaritan Counseling, Kattala Counseling. But they did not know who would be seeing those results, who had access to them, who would be talking to them. And so it throws them off guard and makes them uncomfortable. And they may choose not to take the surveys again because they weren't aware of this. Some students are aware of the differences between surveys. There are several surveys that we take every year. And the differences between them are not often distinguished. So students may think, oh, like, I've taken the survey already this year. I shouldn't have to take another one. Or they don't know the reason behind it, and they will choose not to take it. Some students are also scared of consequences at home. Sometimes this is something that people forget to think about. I know talking with Mr. Kamer one of the first times, he was kind of saying, like, if it was my kid, like, I would want to know. And I was like, yeah, because you're like probably a good parent. But like, some parents just don't really want to know. And so students get yelled at, they're punished, they are shamed, made fun of, et cetera, for asking for help. And instead of being helped, it only gets worse. And the problem is just exacerbated by their parents. So some things that we can possibly do. So just make sure that students are informed about who is seeing the data and possibly like how that is presented to them. So making sure that they know which people from the community, from counselors, are seeing the data, as well as explaining the differences between them so that students know the purpose behind the different screeners. They would be more likely to take them if they understood why they were taking them. Also telling students that their responses will often not be punished by the school. Whether or not that they have a safe place at home, the school in and of itself is not a place for shame and it's not a place for derogatory messages. Moving on to trusted adults. So this is mostly a shout-out to our staff. So students obviously can talk to anyone in the building, whether that's teachers, counseling staff, et cetera. A lot of students do have a parent or guardian to talk to or someone else in the community that they trust outside of school. But students, as I said, they don't always have accepting parents. They might not have the opportunity to build community within other groups in Oshkosh, whether that's church, whether that's sports, whether that's a club after school. And they may have negative experiences with a trusted adult. Whether they told them something and the adult was a mandatory reporter, that student may not understand. They may be scared to explain. However, 68% of students did say they had a teacher specifically, so that does not include counseling staff, that they could confide in at school. And this data was collected during a hybrid year when personal relationships were harder to, like, it was so much harder to interact over a screen, make those connections, have conversations. And so this number, we can probably assume, is the same, if not higher, than it was when this survey was taken. Okay, so moving on to some widespread challenges. So stigma, of course, is a huge problem. It always has been, and it continues to be, less so now than many years ago, but still is. Some students feel like they would get made fun of, be shamed for struggling with something. Families may not be supported again because of stigma. And there's still stigma within the community, and obviously the world as a whole. And these problems, while the student may not believe that mental health is bad, these problems are pushed onto them. It's within society. And so these messages are sent to them. And they don't know how to overcome that, how to express that they're struggling when they feel like they shouldn't be. Resources are also not very well-known by students. They don't know who to ask for help. They don't know what resources there are in communities. And oftentimes, because of these challenges, they don't seek help. And so students that struggle with mental health, sometimes they lead into very unhealthy coping mechanisms, which is what a bit of this section is about. So moving on to this slide. 48% of all students that took this survey had self-reported anxiety. We know that this was, again, during COVID year. So this may be slightly higher. But only 64% of students are represented in this chart. So I can almost guarantee you that there are some students who have anxiety that are not in this data. So, but nonetheless, it's a lot, and it's too many. And also, to talk a bit about the gender gap, that also has to do with stigma. Gender expectations that have been around for a long time in history. And as you can see, like, the male category is so much lower. And whether that is because the male population in the high schools just doesn't have as much anxiety, or whether it's because they feel like they shouldn't have it, they feel like they shouldn't talk about it, they feel like it's not a problem, they feel like they are not allowed to feel those feelings and be open and honest about that. For this slide, so self-reported depression, 29% of students overall. So that's about 540 students out of the 1,800 some that were assessed. Depression, anxiety can often lead to other problems. It exacerbates problems that are already there. So you can see the self-harm. 18% of all students intentionally self-harmed, like, in the last year when this survey was taken. And 11% of all students had made a suicide plan. I know that students who seriously considered suicide was 13% overall. So the majority of those who had seriously considered suicide have made a plan. It's too many. And for whatever reason that might be happening, it's happening nonetheless. And something needs to happen, something needs to change. Resources need to be given, help needs to be given. Because we don't want any student to go unnoticed. We don't want any student to have to feel these feelings. We don't want any student to be missing at school. As I said, depression, anxiety, et cetera, tends to exacerbate certain issues, whether it's GPA, whether it's self-image, interpersonal relationships. And so in general, self-reported rates of anxiety and depression were higher for students who had a low sense of school belonging, experienced bullying, violence, trauma, had low grades, and anything else physically or mentally that set them apart from their peers. And so by helping these specific groups, potentially targeting these groups, making sure that they know what resources they have, they know they can get help, that can also help raise the overall problem. If we target these groups, not only would it help these groups and help the original problem of a low sense of school belonging and these different, whether it's like racism, et cetera, but targeting these groups would also help the entire population. Okay, so getting into some really unhealthy coping mechanisms, we have drug use. So 13% of all students vape. And again, this was a COVID year. So most kids were at home for a good portion of the year. So this may be lower than normal because their parents would be home, their siblings would be home. If this is a secret, they would not want people knowing. I know there are many times where I walk into a hazy bathroom and I smell all sorts of things that should not be in school. This is a problem. And it causes so much more than just dis-focus or more anxiety. So vaping can cause respiratory disease, anxiety, difficulty concentrating. And long-term effects can include mood disorders and permanent lowering of impulse control. It can impact the waste in naps as reform. So vaping has lifelong effects. And this is a rather new technology of sorts. So of course, the effects are still being studied. But they're serious nonetheless. And we don't want students resorting to these to help themselves because it will only make it worse for them. Marijuana use as well, long-term use leads to cycles of severe nausea, dehydration, like severe physical problems. And 10% of students use marijuana. Into any legal drug misuse, 7%, whether that's painkillers or anything they might get at a pharmacy. It's illegal, and for good reason, as I say up there. It has major effects on your gut health, on your physical health, your mental health. Repeated drug misuse can lead to overdosing and chronic health problems. So when a student leans on this, often it's something addictive. And this just, it's the snowball effect. It just keeps getting worse and worse until it kind of falls off a cliff. And with alcohol, about 21% drink alcohol. And youth who drink are more likely to experience disruption of normal growth, increased risk of suicide, memory problems, and changes in brain development that may have lifelong effects. So not only does this affect their grades and their relationships and their own physical well-being, this will affect them for the rest of their life. It will affect whether they have the abilities to get through college if they choose. It will have effects on their ability to get a job, the ability to maintain relationships, the ability to have a stable life. And obviously, we don't want that for students.
Before you move on.
Yes.
I can't see the number. What is the number in red on the far left for?
Any legal drug misuse, 7%.
7%. Okay. For a second, I thought it was 70%. But, okay.
That would be kind of insane.
That would be bad.
Okay, so obviously, I've kind of hit you guys with a lot. So a little more positive track. So how to help students. So some possible steps would be connecting with groups to help students struggling with drug abuse. We know this is a problem, and there are not many ways to help the students that are currently in the high schools. Continuing to speak about mental health and bring awareness to it. Every year, we are shown videos about the warning signs of suicide, about how to report. We talk about the Speak Up, Speak Out app. And talking about depression, there's a video about depression. There's a video about anxiety. And so talking about that, though it may be uncomfortable for students, it is incredibly beneficial because it removes the fear around speaking about it. It removes people's uncomfortableness around it because the more they see it, the more they understand it, the more accepting they are, the more willing they are to see it and to talk about it. And that can be incredibly beneficial for people who are struggling with mental health just to know that their peers are also supportive and they understand what is happening. And also beginning to implement SEL in high schools and middle schools. And I will talk about that more in just a second. So social-emotional learning. Social-emotional learning often stops after elementary or middle school. But feelings do not. Feelings are with you until the day you die. And social-emotional learning is necessary for emotionally mature people and for healthy coping skills. So in elementary school, social-emotional learning can be the guidance counselor coming in and talking about what feelings are called, how you might feel in certain situations, and ways to verbally express what you are feeling. But since you are in elementary... Um, but since you are in elementary school, your brain is not that developed, so they're not going to talk about many coping skills. They're not going to talk about depression, anxiety, et cetera, because those are often not issues that you experience until a little later in life. Um, so lessons about what emotions can and will feel like, they could feel like. Lessons about coping mechanisms, um, even just mentioning giving recommendations for apps to practice breathing. Um, giving them abilities to use something productive, use something helpful to them in order to be less stressed, in order to be less angry is incredibly beneficial. Lessons about how to handle stress and healthy activities to relieve stress. Uh, many students participate in sports or other activities that help them relieve stress, but school can be very stressful. And so giving students lessons about this would be very helpful. Um, as well as lessons on how to handle conflicts and relationships. This is taught to you often as a kid a bit, like use nice words and this and that. But often we do not end up learning how to deal with those emotions inside of you, how to process, how to communicate clearly and respectfully. Um, and all of those things are incredibly necessary for emotionally mature adults. It is incredibly necessary for them to hold a job so they're not lipping off to their boss. It's incredibly necessary to have healthy relationships. And so this would be something that would benefit students, not only in school, but the rest of their lives and in career readiness. Um, here are a couple of resources for drug help that are on the website and the list of resources that, um, the community has. And we are aware that, um, the school partners with and that the community has so many other resources. We have CATALPA, we have marriage and counseling, we have Bella Clinic, we have the Christine Anne Center. Um, however, Eva and I both feel and both observe that drug abuse is one of the problems that goes most unhelped because there simply are not resources for students at school. There's simply not enough connection. And with these resources in the community, availability and accessibility is incredibly difficult to work around. Whether the student does not have the proper medical insurance, whether their family cannot afford it, or even just a busy schedule because these places are almost always full. Um, students are very rarely actually able to receive help for drug problems. And they may try to quit themselves, but most of the time it does not work. They will relapse, they will continue to use and the problem will only get more severe and their addiction will only continue. Um, and so a possible suggestion for this would be asking these places, hey, what are some resources that we could recommend students to? What are trainings that you could give our staff, our teachers, people in the building so that when someone, a student, is caught with something, is seen with something, or reaches out for help, they are not just punished and like the drug is not just taken away, but they are given something to begin them on the path to quitting, to stop using, to a better, healthier life. Um, because, yes, like we, we have resources, but they only work for so many people and they're only accessible to so many people. And this drug abuse problems are a problem for so many more than just a few people. Um, and drug abuse, starting early, only continues into adulthood, it only continues into your life. And if you don't get help early, it may never stop. So educating more than just our students. So making resources more known, not only to students, but to parents, to the community, be incredibly important so that they know there is help out there for them if they need it. There are places they can go, there are people they can reach out to. Um, using open house to educate parents. I was made aware that there is a bit of this already, but during the freshman orientation, having a part in the presentation that's like, hey, parents, high school is going to be very hard for your student. It often is, it's a large change in their life, it's a huge part of their life. And they may struggle with mental health, here are some ways you could help them, here are some people you can reach out to, and here is how to respond and handle that. Because a lot of times, parents being unhelpful or absent about their students' mental health does not stem from a place of not caring. It stems from a place of not knowing what to do and being scared of the issue in and of itself. Um, continue training for staff. There's already training and just making sure that all staff is up to date and informed about mental health is super important because staff is most often the resource that students go to, um, to talk, to rant, to have a connection if they cannot find that at home. Um, and options for students who are flagged on surveys. And so what that may look like, because the call home is mandatory. So whether that is having the student sit in on the phone call with their parent so that the student knows exactly what is communicated to the parent. Um, whether that is possibly having an in-person meeting with the counselor, because a lot of times having someone simply just to mediate, to listen to both sides and validate both sides is incredibly beneficial and it makes communication so much easier. Um, and allowing the student to sit in and possibly speak for themselves on that phone call with the parent and having the counselor there to make sure that what is communicated from both sides is communicated clearly and the counselor also knows what is going on. But having all parties be informed and be involved would be incredibly beneficial and it would put some control into the student's hands, which not only would make them feel better, but could potentially help the situation. Um, possibly making the information on the OASD website easier to find. Um, it's a little difficult to navigate and obviously there's only so much we can do about that, but making sure that it is clearly labeled and it is there and it is obvious for people who are looking for it. Um, even I was having a lot of trouble finding stuff about mental health, about, um, all the resources we have. I emailed Mr. Camer for a list of the resources because I couldn't find it. And so for people who are less tech savvy than I, like it is quite hard to find the information. Um, but yes. And yeah, that is the presentation.
So thank you, Charlotte, for that, that was very informative. Mr. Camer, anything to add, just from your context and working with Charlotte?
Yeah, so first off, I just wanted to thank Charlotte and Eva for digging into this really important topic. Uh, I really enjoyed having the opportunity to speak with them and getting their perspective. And I couldn't believe how busy the two of them are, their schedules are ridiculous. So the fact that they were able to take out time to talk with me about this was very much appreciated. Um, and that, that student perspective is so very important. Um, a lot of times, you know, we were able to have conversations with students and get input from them. But when you have a student who's seeking information from other students, there are things that come out that you know sometimes don't when it's an adult asking students questions. So that piece is extremely helpful.
Um, oh, you can go. Bravo, whatever.
Go ahead.
Um, thank you very much, it's very important information. I noticed during the report, the information's a little dated, though. I mean, we're talking from COVID. So typically like, I like to get information in reports like that and then have it year over year so that we can know where we're making impact, uh, you know, properly allocate resources. Um, so since this was from twenty twenty-one, you know, it'd be helpful. And there's been a lot of changes, I mean, a lot is different since COVID. Um, it's just hard for us to use that data, you know, to, to make, um, proper allocations of resources, I think. Although I know that those problems exist without a doubt because my daughter's at West, right, and is in high school. And I talk to high schoolers all the time. And I know that those, those issues exist and I take them very, very seriously. Um, but I would like to, you know, to have regular data so that we can make sure that we're being effective in the tools that we're using to improve, to improve some of that stuff up there that we don't want to see. Um, so those are my thoughts.
Chris, can I piggyback off of that? Just so that, that, you and I are thinking the same thing, because what I was going to ask was to Mr. Camer, what, um, we saw this presentation similarly last year, the issues that are presented are issues that were presented last year. Do we have any insight as to where we are from last year's presentation on data and things like that? Is, you know, have we seen any changes, is there anything like that? I think that's where Chris is going, is where I'm going as well, that I would like to see kind of where that, where we are now.
I'm glad you asked that question because we use a number of different surveys, as you can tell from the presentation. So the, the survey where, where Charlotte and Eva polled most of their data was the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. That survey is an anonymous survey that's offered to all high school and middle school students, but it's offered only once every other year. So the last time it was taken was last school year. And we're really at the mercy of DPI in terms of how quickly that information's released. So sometimes it's released in fall, other times it's in spring. I looked earlier today, they did just release the twenty twenty-three data, but they don't have their, um, comprehensive report, so they just have individual schools' data in there right now. It's usually a few weeks after that where they're actually able to compile the data for, uh, district-wide, for like high school and middle schools. And that's really where the, the most useful information from us as a district. Um, you know, at that point, we're able to poll it. So unfortunately, we can't poll it more frequently.
Why?
Because it's only done every two years.
But why can't we do annually? It's too expensive, it's too cumbersome?
It's only offered every two years. It's offered through the, the state of Wisconsin, Department of Public Instruction. So it's their portal, they open it up.
We don't control it, it's nothing we own, that makes sense.
I will say though, that the participation data from the wellness screen was from this year. Um, so that, that is readily available to us. Um, Samaritan Counseling does pull reports for us. It's, it's not as in-depth as the YRBS, but it does give us some indication in terms of where students are at. And then we also have our SABR screener, which is a little bit different. It's a social emotional rating scale, um, not tied specifically to mental health, but, um, we are able to get some indication of where students are from a social emotional standpoint from that screener.
Where do you, and this is a broad-based question, but I think it's important. Where do you feel like we're at it in terms of a district as far as addressing these things? You know, is it, where are we, where are we improving, where, where, where could we do more?
Yeah, so to be completely honest with you, I, I think from a school-based mental health standpoint, we are one of the best districts in the state. And there's a lot of things that we do really well, from offering clinical therapy uh, in all of our buildings, which is something that not many districts our size have available, to having the wellness screen available, um, at numerous grade levels to, to help give our, our parents and our students an indication of, of when they're struggling. Um, again, that, that's something that's unique to our district and all of the other components that we have in place. Um, the fact is we have some wonderful partners with CATALPA Health, Samaritan Counseling, Collaborative Wellness, Rawhide. Um, most districts aren't fortunate enough to have that many partners within their communities to come together and, and help solve problems around mental health. Um, if you go back to look at our YRBS data from twenty fourteen, twenty sixteen, um, it, it is really alarming in terms of what we were seeing from suicidality within our students. So, um, students who are contemplating suicide, students who are reporting attempts of suicide, um, and other, uh, mental health indicators like the, uh, the depression indicator on the YRBS to where we are now, where we've cut that percentage in half, if not more, in most of those areas. So we've definitely seen growth in terms of the assessments. It's still hard though, when you look at data and you see that, you know, forty-nine percent of our students are struggling with anxiety. Or, you know, that thirteen percent have come up with a suicide plan. Those are all things that, you know, keep us working to improve our process. And the, the information that we got from Charlotte and Eva's really helpful, I think. There are a lot of things that we can do in terms of, uh, better publicizing our Rise Up program and making sure everybody's aware of what that is. But then also continuing to find ways to reduce stigma within our schools. We do a lot of things, like we have sources of strength at both of our high schools, which have done a lot of great things to help reduce stigma. Um, we talk about, um, we do trainings every year, uh, starting in sixth grade, that talk about, um, what students can do if they recognize signs of suicide in themselves or others, who they can go to. Uh, and then within our universal social emotional learning, um, practices that we have in our buildings, you know, a lot of that is embedded with there, within there as well, so. Um, but there's always, there's always more that we can do. We're always looking for new and innovative ways to build on our program and, um, really improve the mental health of, of the students in our schools.
Can I say?
Yes, I have a question too.
Um, so, um, my son's a freshman in high school this year, so a lot of this stuff really, um, stands out. Thank you for sharing. He plays three sports and is in band and, and that's, as it is, he's got a lot of support at home from us. But he even got to a place a couple of times where he was just stressed and just feeling all of that. And he was able to get in and, and see someone and talk through it, which is good. We, we talk through that, it's good to have another adult and other people in your life to be able to have those conversations with. But there were, there was a day where he was physically sick because he was just so stressed. And we, this was early on, not, you know, September, October. You know, we let him come home and, and just kind of rest for a day and just let it go and we talked through it. But, um, I know there's not a lot of, there's a lot of kids who don't have that ability to be able to work through that. So I like talking through a lot of the options that we have. Um, I do like the idea of orientation, um, talking through that at orientation. Having, you know, Mr. Wright and I have just gone through that. I think that would be very helpful for parents, um, to hear that, you know, there's a lot of pressure that kids are putting on themselves that maybe we don't always realize that they're, they're thinking now. Um, a lot of the issues that we've talked through now are issues that have been going on forever. It's, it's now that we are taking the steps to try to help fix those issues and issues that we ignored for a long time. These are not things we talked about when I was in high school, which wasn't that long ago in, in this city. So I commend the fact that we realize what, that, you know, all of this helps with student achievement. And if we're all sitting around talking about how do we get better literacy rates and everything else, this all factors into that, right? Um, I would be curious to know, and thank you to both of the high school principals who are in attendance tonight um, for this, um, presentation. I hope that, I'm not going to call on them to say anything, but, you know, that your feedback as well and what you guys are seeing in those buildings are shared so that when we make decisions here, when it comes to budgeting and everything else, takes into account what you are seeing because you are seeing it, you know, every day from every student. So, um, thank you both for being here, for that, um, and supporting. Um, but I think it's fair to say, like, there's a lot more progress we can make. But I think the partnerships that you highlighted are, it's good to know that we have more than maybe other areas do, that we've really done a good job of finding places to support. But, you know, just as we go forward, um, I know we want to. The surveys that were taken, and I get that some of the students didn't do that. My son in middle school took that survey and there was a question that got flagged when he was in middle school. Maybe been a different survey, but whatever. And he got brought in and asked a question about it. And he very clearly said, I didn't understand the question, like, I didn't mean that.
Oh.
But that is wonderful. Like, I was very happy that whatever was, you know, found was brought in and talked about. Because there's a lot of kids who maybe aren't on the far end of that, that don't know what they're dealing with. And so how do we get more people to do that survey? I would love to hear what we can do to get the trust in that survey that, you know, it's here to help. Um, because I think there's a tremendous value in that.
Yeah, every year we meet with Samaritan. And one of the things we talk about every year is how do we boost participation? So one of the things that we did this year, uh, that's different than last year is we started staggering the survey, so it's done every two years. We used to do it starting in eighth grade every year through twelfth grade. And what we found in talking to students is a lot of them are getting survey fatigue. And that was the reason why they were opting not to take it. So instead of. So instead of starting in eighth grade and going through 12th grade, what we decided to do was move a little bit more upstream. And we piloted the survey at fifth grade this year and then we started doing every other year. So the cadence now is fifth grade, seventh grade, ninth grade, and 11th grade. And the hope is by breaking it up a little bit more, students are going to be more willing to take it on a consistent basis. So one thing to keep in mind though, when we first started with the wellness screen over 10 years ago, we used an active consent model, which meant that only parents who signed the consent would have their child screened. And at that time, on a good year, we were screening 20% of our students. So since then, we've kind of changed the model up in other ways where we now do passive consent, where we alert parents three times that their child is going to be screened. They have the opportunity to opt out, but we're able to cast a wider net. And we're not where we want to be. It's better than it used to be, but that's a conversation we will be having again this spring is okay, how do we continue to work on boosting that participation rate? One other thing I will.
I like the idea of the orientation conversation, at least start there. Maybe that would be some help to set that stage for, but sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, no. One thing I will say is that part of the power of this is giving the opportunity to students in the first place because there are so many students that are just waiting for the opportunity to be asked the question. And this gives them that opportunity. So that, that's what helps me sleep a little better at night is that we're putting it out there for them. And for those that are really seeking the support, that really want the help, they will ask for it. And this is the mechanism that we use for that, one of the mechanisms.
Mrs. Carolyn.
Quick question. Do they, do students get one or two mental health days? Or I thought they could take a mental health day. No? Am I making this up? I'm making this up.
Well, no different than like a sick day, right? Are you talking about for students?
Right, yes. Like if they, they call in and they say, I need a mental, I thought we had a program.
I can speak slightly to that. I know that that is some sort of thing at the high schools at least where you have sick days, but then I know that something about mental health days were also mentioned, but.
I thought I read it in the.
I am not aware of the difference between them or how many of each that we have.
Oh, I see. Yeah, I thought I read it in the newspaper, the West Newspaper, something about the program. Anyway, that's not important. I have a couple of other questions too. This is an issue that is very important to me. I lost my brother to suicide in 2022 and I also spent time at Rogers Behavioral Health in 2019 for their depression recovery program. And I'm very open about this because I believe it's breaking stigma and we all need to talk about our experiences so that you don't feel like you're alone. And a couple of years ago, we had talked about before the pandemic, doing some sort of mental health conference or like a, where we gathered all the resources in one room like NAMI and Community for Hope and Good Samaritan and kind of like a fair. So students could walk around and kind of see like, oh, what do you do or how can you help or whatever? So I think that that is still an idea worth revisiting and I think it would showcase the services we have and then people could actually talk to the people at Rogers or whatever. So I wanted to throw that out there. And then I also wanted to know if, I know that during the pandemic, we had suicidal students who had to wait six weeks to get treatment into Rogers. And I'm hoping that that wait time has diminished slightly because our needs were so great during the pandemic, right? We all had anxiety and depression and stress and we didn't have enough resources. So have we kind of leveled out in what's available?
So that, that always ebbs and flows a little bit. I will say that I am more optimistic now about the resources in our community than I've ever been before from a mental health standpoint. As we've looked to expand the clinical therapy part of Rise Up over the years, the biggest barrier for us was being able to find enough therapists with the partners that we're using to be able to cover the handful of schools where we had that service in place. Now with bringing additional partners to the table, you know, we had no trouble being able to cover all of our schools this year.
That's great.
So this is the first year we've really been able to do that. But in addition to that, I'm excited to see additional partners being able to come to the table now, like we started working closely with solutions.
That's great.
To talk about therapeutic ways to address substance use in our schools versus being punitive as we've typically done in the past. So we're always looking for those opportunities, but I would, I would say there's probably more now than there's ever been.
Yep. My last comment just has to do with, I would like to see our community have a mental health facility at some point because I know when people are struggling, not just students, but people in general, if you do not feel safe, where do you go? You go, you have, the only option is the hospital and they will keep you safe, but they will not treat you. So I still have that dream. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Herzog.
Thank you. One of the, first of all, I want to thank Charlotte and her counterpart at North for this report. I'll speak for myself, I sometimes get probably so wrapped up in focusing on academics that I sometimes overlook what student, individual students are dealing with on a day-to-day basis. So this was very, very informative and very helpful. Like Mrs. Wyman, I was at Webster Stanley today and sat in on several of the book readings and the sharings and the questions and answers that came afterward. And there was one, one of the readers that I saw who was engaging the students and asking about feelings and emotions and so on. So I, I felt like I was really seeing social emotional learning in action. One of the things that surprised me in this report was, I think there are two references that we should begin to implement social and emotionally, emotional learning in our middle and high schools. I thought we were doing that, that, I just found that surprising.
We are.
Okay.
Yeah, and it looks different than it does at the elementary school.
Absolutely, yes.
One of the challenges at the, at the middle school and high school level is that it doesn't, it doesn't really live someplace where it's accessible for all students. What I mean by that is as we implement social emotional learning at the elementary school, we know we can get, we can target every student just by going in their classroom because I'm in the same classroom all day. That's not the case at the, the middle school and certainly not the case at the high school where you have students who have different schedules or going from room to room. So really where social emotional learning lives at the middle school and high school level is within the universal culture and climate within those buildings. And really, we're not where we want to be yet, but our goal is to integrate social emotional learning into everything that we do within our buildings. So it's, it's not, you know, a specific class students would take or a specific lesson they would get during, you know, their, their health class or W hour, but it's something that all of our teachers need to understand and be responsible for teaching either explicitly or, you know, as situations come up within their rooms. So we've done a lot of work with restorative practices, conscious discipline at the elementary level. There are components of social emotional learning built into both of those things. But as, as we continue to build that out there at the secondary level, I think it's going to be more apparent to our students and our teachers, you know, when those things are being taught, when those opportunities are taking place.
It's only been, I think, three or four years perhaps that we've had students, we've had students longer than that sitting at the board table. There is a plaque over on the wall showing how long we've had student reps sitting in on board meetings. But it's probably only been about the last three to four at the most where we've asked the students to delve into a topic or topics that are of interest to the schools. So I'm wondering, I know you've, you've outlined a number of things, but I'm wondering then what is the role of the high schools in taking this information and where do they, they go with it? I'm big on action plans and these data were very informative, but, but now what?
Now what?
In terms of the schools. You've outlined a number of things at, at a high level, which is great, but I think eventually it needs to get down to the roots on the ground, so to speak, at the, at the high schools. And finally, I've been sitting here wondering, okay, so what is the board's role in all of this? And we deal with policy, so if there are policies that need to be implemented or revised, that would be an appropriate place for the board to get involved. But also, and equally important is that we make sure that we're supporting and allocating the resources because every student is important, every student is valued and we have to make sure that our students are feeling good about themselves, feeling that they are enough. I've been reading some books on that lately, so excuse me for, for bringing that, but it's true. We have to help our students understand that they are enough, they are good enough and that the school is here to support them. And I know we, we do that, I know we do that on a, I know we, thank you. I know we do that on a daily basis, but maybe it just needs to be more, I'm not sure what the right word is, focused or, or directed. I've referenced in the past, I volunteer at the St. Vinnie store where we help people who are in need of rent assistance and so on. And sometimes we have children present, sometimes we don't, but it's all kids who need help. But we also know that there are some intervening variables such as poverty that have an impact on students' lives. They don't know where their next meal is coming from, they compare themselves with other kids. And so I'm hopeful that, that the principals will work with our, our, our student leaders here and figure out what needs to be done at the specific school so that we, we can help all kids. And sometimes it's hard to measure that. You know, we don't know necessarily what student we helped feel better or made a, a good decision because a teacher reached out or a counselor reached out or a custodian reached out to a child and, and changed the trajectory of their life. So I'll leave that in your hands. Thank you. Sorry for meandering there.
I forgot one thing.
So just, just a couple of things, just to the point of action plans. So things that I wrote down that again, I think Mr. Kemmer can work with our high school principals on that I heard tonight. So one is orientation awareness, being able to build in within our orientations. So that's something certainly that we can look at for next year. The idea of, I think, exploring a mental health fair and what that looks like, you know, and that, that could be a community resource, you know, as well as not just for our, our students, but I, I think that could be a good community resource. And then one thing that I heard from Charlotte that I think would be something, this would be more of a district level, is just having the website be more accessible to those resources. So that's something that, so those, those are three like specific action steps that I think I could take away from tonight and be able to work with our staff on.
I have another action step that we can take. I would like to see us to continue to get more therapy dogs because research shows that therapy dogs help with anxiety and stress. We know that. And if you take the QPR training, which is Question, Persuade, and Refer, which is a free training, I highly recommend it, you learn that the, the number one thing that keeps people from dying by suicide is if they have a pet because they worry about who's going to feed their pet. So I would like to see us get more therapy dogs because I know they help.
As a student in the high school who's been around therapy dogs, who's struggled with depression, anxiety, et cetera, I love them, they're wonderful. Last year was quite rough for me and I was in class with Sarah Dobish and she has Atlantis, her therapy dog, and she would bring her in almost every day. And almost every day Atlantis would come, she'd sit by me, I'd sit with her on the floor, et cetera. But being able to just have something during class, something during the school day, to look forward to, to like say hi to her, to pet her, et cetera, was so much fun and it did help quite a lot.
It helps a lot.
Charlotte, I want to thank you and Eva for all of the effort that you put into this most wonderful presentation. It was very informative.
Thank you.
I think the board enjoyed it and not only enjoyed it, but every time that we can talk about mental health, it's one more way that we can help mental health. And I think with some of Dr. Davis's action plans, the one that I wrote down was add resources to the website. We just had conversations about drive people to the website, drive people to the website, but then we need to make the website relevant for those that are using it. So that was a wonderful, wonderful suggestion. And I look forward to hearing Mr. Kemmer's plans of how we can continue to improve mental health and those activities around it so students don't have to struggle. And, and I hope that when we see the next results from the next two-year task, that we will see some improvements because the COVID time was a horrendous time for mental health and I, I hope that we're making some changes in our district to help improve it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You did a great job. Thank you.
Superintendent's Good News Report.
Okay, so the Superintendent's Good News Report will start at Ashgash West with our eighth graders from all of our Westside Middle Schools performed with the Ashgash West High School Pep Band for their eighth annual, or for their annual eighth grade pep band night. They rehearsed with the high schoolers and directors, had a pizza dinner, got to hang out and play games with band friends, and finally performed for the pregame of the girls' high school basketball game. So a great program builder for, for Westside Middle Schoolers. Vell Phillips Middle School students had the opportunity to enrich themselves in the theatrical performance of The Late Homecomer, a Hmong family memoir at the Fox Cities Performing Arts Center. The show discussed the Hmong experience from the Vietnam War to the struggles of life in America as a refugee. Many students were able to see themselves and their culture from this great learning experience. Oaklawn Elementary recently had an assembly that featured a skit put on by students based on the book, What Is Your, What Color Is Your Heart? It's a great reminder that our hearts can be many colors depending on what we are feeling at the moment. Carl Trager Elementary students recently enjoyed the hands-on lesson on the Chinese Lunar New Year. Students learned about the 15 Days of Celebration, Chinese culture, and even danced a special We love providing our students with opportunities that may not otherwise, they, they may not otherwise experience. So Carl Trager Middle School students are enjoying learning about gymnastics as part of their latest PE unit. And you can see they're having a lot of fun by those smiles on their faces. Third graders at Shapiro recently presented their Genius Hour projects as part of their STEM work over at Shapiro. Students picked a topic of interest, researched it, and presented their findings to their families and classmates. So great work to everyone on those projects. In January, this was discussed before, but just again, Ashgash West students embarked on a journey through the teachings of Martin, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., embracing his message of change and unity. They pledged to enact positive changes within school and community, turning inspiration into action. These commitments are now proudly displayed throughout February as part of Black History Month at Ashgash West. So good work to everyone on that. It was great to see all the community members enthusiastic about volunteering in our schools. Thank you to everyone who joined us for the Volunteer Fair and Strategic Plan Update on February 7th. Our school and district leaders are eager to partner together to support our students. So stay tuned for more volunteer opportunities, information, and spotlights. And again, just want to thank all of our volunteers, our community members that came out to support and thank our principals and staff who took that night to a lot of positive energy and positive feedback from that night. So thank you for that. As, as previously announced, we will be adopting a new K-5 Literacy Core Curriculum for the 2025, 2026 school year. To inform this adoption, next school year, we will conduct a pilot of one or more literacy, new literacy curricula at select grade levels across the elementary, across our elementary schools. To support this work, our literacy committee recently met for their second meeting. They examined the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction's Early Literacy Curriculum and Instruction Materials Guide to better understand the components, components of a robust literacy curriculum. They also learned about how, how knowledge building curriculum impacts reading comprehension and literacy skill development. The literacy committee's next meeting will take place in March. An overview of the pilot, committee, and curriculum being considered is available on our website. If you can find, and you can find it on our school, not if you can find it, you can find it, sorry. You can find it on the school curriculum website or by searching for literacy on our website. So apologize for that. And there is the laundry list of activities that I've been attending throughout the, all of our schools and community over the last three weeks. So it's been a very active, as you can see up there, very active time to kick off this calendar year. But I think a great start and some great energy between our community partnerships and all the hard work that's going on in our classrooms across the system every day. So thank you everybody for your support on that. And that concludes this. for your support on that. And that concludes the Superintendent's Good News Report for tonight.
Thank you very much. Next, Mr. Fox and Mr. Considine with Menominee Elementary School update.
Evening.
Good evening.
I'm pleased to report, per the staff report provided to the Board of Education at the Menominee School, is on budget and on track per our schedule. Just as a preview for our current PowerPoint presentation, this is typically something that I probably should have done a little earlier. As we go month to month, you've been hearing me reference you to A, Unit B, Unit C, Unit D. I've also tried to utilize and attach a name to a particular place. So because B is fairly large, you know, are they working in the gymnasium or is it the cafeteria? But I wanted you to have this in your back pocket and I wanted you to be able to see it for tonight. So as we move forward, when we do talk about Unit A in the grade level classrooms, or Unit B, what happens to be going on in the attachment between B and C, this gives you kind of a roadmap, a reference point as to what we're actually talking about. Because occasionally, there may not be a particular room to reference. So this is for your reference, for your information. Hopefully, it helps. And of course, during presentation, if you have any questions, just please ask. We'll try to point out where we are talking while we're in the building proper.
Where is Hazel?
Sorry. Hazel Street is to your east, to your right. It'll be on the right side of the picture. Correct. Melvin will be on top, I guess. I could have put the roads on there as well. Does that help orient you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry.
So Menominee Elementary School, work completed in the last 30 days. Again, building section A and B as we just saw, classrooms. B is more in the cafeteria. Floor, precast floor topping is complete. That's your second floor where they pour concrete over the top of existing spancrete planks. Area B roofing is complete. That's covering the cafeteria. So that is dry. That is heated. They're getting ready to pour that tomorrow, as a matter of fact, part of it. Area B has been enclosed and heated to support winter work. So that section that we pointed out between B and C, which is administration, has a plastic wall so they keep that warm and they can continue their finished work internal to that cafeteria and those other rooms within that space. The air handlers, all the mechanical devices, the chiller, all of them have been craned into place. They are within their appropriate mechanical spaces. The chiller is up on top of the roof. So we're a much better place this spring going into this summer than we were with Vell Phillips, going into its final weeks and months. Area A interior masonry walls have all been completed. Drywall walls are well underway, almost complete, and they are muddying and taping joints as we speak. So some pictures of what we're seeing, and we just had a tour today with the core planning team, so it's even much further than what we're seeing today. First picture, top left, southwest, Area A, again, that's grades two through five, gives you a sense of the, all the fullness on the exterior. Really impressive right now. They're putting in some of the large pieces of glass that you're starting to see the plastic come off, and the plastic comes off the glass. Glass is fully exposed, looks really nice. Area C, that's actually a photo from the roof of Area A, but it's kind of overlooking the administration and the roofwork that's going on. And you can see behind the crane is Area D, which is our K-1 area. Top left is a picture of the cafeteria from the outside. That'll actually be your entry point for bus drop-off along Melvin. Lower left, Area D, as I've mentioned, is the external, beginnings of the external facade, the CMU block for our K-1 area. Center bottom is Area A penthouse. Again, we call that a penthouse. That's a mechanical room that is on top of the second floor of Area A. And then Area C, that is the roof being installed for our administration. Now that, that's what we refer to as a pan deck. That deck is completely done and the roofers were up there actually roofing today, adding insulation, adding rubber membrane to keep that area dry. And they're not far away from wrapping that area and heating it to pull the frost out of the ground as well. Top left is cafeteria. So as I mentioned, they're getting ready to pour the cafeteria. That is fully enclosed. It's fully heated. It's been graded and they've got the membrane on the ground, moisture barrier to pour concrete, at least for the southern half of that cafeteria and the servery. You can see a picture there of the same cafeteria, just turn the other direction looking to the south as the future communities room. Top right, I don't show pictures often of the penthouse, so those are the air handlers in Area A that will serve first floor and second floor of the grades two through five. There's a separate mechanical space for the gymnasium cafeteria and then a third mechanical space for our K-1 area. Lower left, Area A, second grade, just a picture to kind of show you the front of a classroom, some of the backers that are in the wall. You can see the wall assemblies coming together with insulation, sheet rock. You can see where they're going to be anchoring all their support pieces, the, in the centers where all our technology will get hooked up. I just thought that might be something that might interest you and something you can't see when the walls are finished. Center bottom, gymnasium in this particular picture, they just got the duck work painted. Now the duck work is fully covered and they did paint the ceilings. So the ceiling's completely white as well. And they're moving right along in the gym. Lower right, Area A, there's another one of these on the second floor. That's our, kind of a unique little space as a reading nook. It was kind of a brainchild of Bray, sort of a nice oddity for a child to be able to curl up with a book or to just sit and talk. And these will be found on the far west side of grades two through five, again, first and second floor. So the next 30 days, we anticipate completion of Area C, Area A exterior walls. Area B concrete slab on grading cafeteria will be complete. Fire protection, Area A will be complete. A and B will be complete. Mechanical, electrical plumbing roughens for Area B, C, and D will be ongoing. And paint in Area A will be complete. Any questions on the progress of the building as of today?
Exciting. Very exciting. Mr. Considine, any comments?
I think based off of the conversation earlier tonight, I think it's important to note that, such as that kind of cubby shots where we talked about kids being able to, I read in a book, you know, we tried to think through thoughtful design of the entire building of allowing kids to feel in areas of kind of openness or a feeling of community, but then also offer opportunities for compression, right, and allow kids to find different spots throughout the building to help them go through whatever they may be going through in a day. And so it was really a great opportunity for the school district to also embrace that and offer up a design opportunity. There's, I was counting while Jim was talking, I think there's four of them located throughout the building in this building. And, you know, it's just another piece of, I think, kudos to the school district, the admin team of, you know, really working with a vision to help correct, you know, some of the things that we can't always control.
Marvelous.
There was a vendor at the state convention, I think it was in aisle 900, so it was away from Bray, who had little things like that, that looked like they were units that were ready to, like, just install. So I'm delighted to see that because that vendor was doing a good job of promoting that concept. And it ties in with the social and emotional learning that we were talking about earlier. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I mean, again, kudos to the school district for embracing this. I know it's a great opportunity of ours at Bray to be able to work with a team like yours that embraces this. And that's going to be a professional photo that we would look to take and be able to hopefully share and hopefully spread, you know, more throughout this school district, but then throughout the state as well.
That's great. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, you guys.
Mr. Nihon's Budget Variance Escher Funds Update.
Good evening. So the budget report for this month is trending fairly similar to the way it has the last two, three months. I do anticipate I got some news earlier this week on some revenue numbers that are going to be reflecting beginning next month. So we've got a couple key pieces of revenue that we get that are really variable. And it's hard to predict when we set the budget, but those are going to come in considerably over budget. So the current budget deficit that we have for operation funds, where we're looking at about a million dollar deficit, is really going to be significantly lower when we get to next month's report as we start putting in some of the revenues that we're now start getting to be known. This is about the time of year where you start knowing them. So for example, we start getting a better definition of what our Medicaid billing revenue is going to be. So some of those variable revenues are starting to come in and be known. So I would anticipate next report is going to look a little bit different where the deficit or the expected deficit is going to be considerably smaller than what you're seeing tonight. Our wages are still, continue to run higher than trend, but again, this month, our health plan is helping offset that. So as a collective salary and benefits, we are running like 0.3% off of where we would expect. So those are, the health plan really is helping offset right now, which is, which is what we would hope for within the health plan if we have budgeted correctly with that.
I've got one question. Sorry, I should have probably asked this earlier, but I didn't have time. But shouldn't wages be like a set number, right? Like, because we lock in, you know, we should lock in wages, right, when we are done with negotiations? So how do they rise above trend? That's my question.
Yep.
I think it should be fixed.
So ideally, they would. The way our system is, the financial system and HR system that we have, and the system our size, we really are dependent on having a position control system that works with our financial system for budgeting. And right now, the current setup, our position control was never set up to really run position control when Skyward was installed 15, 20 years ago. So when we pull to create a budget on the personnel side, when we go to pull all the staffing out of Skyward, we aren't, it pulls individually. So for us to go through every little individual person to know whether or not they're staying in the district or not, we turn over between retirements and staff coming and going and all that on an annual basis. It's in the 300 to 400 staff members at varying times throughout the year. That's really hard to get a locked-in number with that many, with that many staff that are going to have that kind of a turnover percentage. And then there are certain classifications of employees that we just don't even pull into the budget. So any miscellaneous or temporary employee, we don't necessarily pull them in. So when we go and fill those again for the next budget year, we're plugging a guest number in, just the nature of those categories. So we're going to have variability within that. It would be great if we didn't, but we also have a fairly large support staff that is hourly. So those aren't, we're, again, we're somewhat guesstimating at what their hours are going to be on an annualized basis. But if they work an extra half hour here, an hour there, then we are going to be off.
Like something like a long-term subposition if you have more than you expected, right? Something like that's going to cause you to run a little higher?
Correct. And again, we're setting budgets when we're still, and we're making that pull when we're still trying to hire. And then any adjustments we make throughout the year, we have staffing changes and different scheduling changes at the high school that all of a sudden create an overload situation, and we may or may not have accounted for that. There's, in a system our size, there's a lot of moving parts within this. We are transitioning or beginning to transition to a new HRIS system, which is going to help the HR office with position control and the business office talk easier and better and truly have that as a position instead of an individual. So that's coming, but that's down the road yet. We're at the beginning of that process.
Thank you. I was thinking about it too in longer term, right? Like when we make decisions on the, you know, the raise percentage or whatever, right, like how, how we can fit that into a more consistent flow. But that's a good answer. And thank you for the information.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Coleman, Advanced Learning Program Charter School, ALPS.
All right. Good evening to the board. So I provided a board report to indicate that the ALPS Charter School contract is scheduled to expire this April. And so what we would like to do first is to approve the decision to not renew the contract. It's important that I communicate that our intention is to maintain the ALPS programming located at Tipler Middle School. However, we will not maintain that programming as a charter separate from Perry Tipler School. What questions can I answer about that?
Are we looking to expand the number of students in that program?
As of right now, we don't have, our plans are not to expand the program as of right now. We certainly are looking at potential expansion in the future, and then also looking at how a program like that could be replicated at other middle schools.
Are we also looking to diversify the participants in that program?
We certainly are. And part of that is to expand ways that we communicate and inform our parents and communities about the program. And so I just want to thank the teachers of ALPS and Dr. Poquette for the work that they've done to get the word out. I've certainly heard, particularly this year, that more parents and community members have found the information to be more accessible. So we'll learn from and build on the efforts that we have seen in place this year to just communicate to parents about this opportunity and then to answer questions. So we believe that through that form of communication at a baseline, that's one way that we can diversify the participation in that program, but then also provide more targeted opportunities to bring that information, have conversation with parents and students about this as an opportunity.
Thank you.
That's great.
When you, just to piggyback off of your question, Dr. Herzog, and thank you for it. Like, when you're talking about more kids throughout the district being given the opportunity to get into this program and diversifying it, do you feel like our current, the current process that we go through to allow kids into that program is adequate? You know, does it work to help diversify the program? Like, is it a good system, do you think?
So I'm working with our Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion to think about ways we can expand engagement, to look at that process. As of right now, I don't believe that the process on its face, as we look at what it takes to be eligible for the program, eliminates students. But I think that we have received feedback that the number of seats that become available and the number of seats that become available each year that are often slotted to siblings or relatives of current students make it more difficult for other students to be able to be a part of that or to take those new seats. So that's feedback that we've received from community members and will continue to look at ways to modify that component of the process so that as spots become available, they aren't immediately consumed by relatives or family members who are already engaging in that.
Thank you. I would just say, you presented a couple times at the Education Committee. We went through a lot of this in depth. And so I thank you for the time. As Mr. Wright said, I think having it somehow be more representative, it's not always going to be exactly. It's going to be difficult to be representative of our entire district, but to find a way to be more representative of our district as we move forward, I think is very important. So thank you for your work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have you covered D, the transition request for Perry Tipler?
Yep. And so then the next report is to, so the next report is to ensure that the board is supporting- supportive of and aware that ALPS is not going away. So even with the expiration of the charter, we value and recognize the benefit that the Advanced Learning Program provides to our students and to our community. And our commitment is to continue to provide that opportunity. And so even with the expiration of the charter, the next part of this report or the, the report that follows this describes what our pathway forward is to continue to make this program available to students.
Awesome. Marvelous.
And we'll bring this back then at the second meeting of the month for action, for approval from the board.
Perfect.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have heard from our student board representative and are there, it doesn't appear that we have any public forum speakers this evening, so we will move on. Workshops, Staff Engagement Survey. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you so much. So the first workshop that we'll be going over is the Staff Engagement Survey. The importance of staff engagement is called out in our core values, underscoring its critical role in fostering highly engaged students. The Staff Engagement Survey contributes 25% of the weighting of the STAR rating, say that fast three times, in the core area of engagement and communication. Staff engagement is a leading indicator of student achievement. Organizations and teams with higher employee engagement and lower active disengagement perform at higher levels. And according to Gallup, employee engagement is a foundational component to workplace outcomes. If you want to talk about well-being, development, performance and more, you also have to talk about employee engagement. Why? Because every conversation a manager has with an employee affects their engagement. To drive real change within our teams and to meet the needle on metrics that matter, such as literacy and math, we need to learn more about employee engagement within the Oshkosh Area School District. As of 2024, the district STAR rating stands at three with our current engagement level at 47%. The Oshkosh Area School District uses the Gallup Q12 Employee Engagement Survey to measure employee engagement. The survey is conducted through Gallup and administered by Gallup, by CISA VI and independent third party. We first launched the Gallup Q12 Survey in January of 2021 and part of its commitment is to listen and learn from our employees. The district conducts the Gallup survey twice a year, once in the fall and once in the spring. The goal of the Q12 Survey is to start a conversation between leaders and each of their employees. The survey allows employees to communicate their needs to their team and for that team to know what needs they should work on to meet. So to gain deeper insight into the Q12 levels, we can look at this pyramid and what it's showing us, showing us is fulfilling the requirements of the three foundational levels. So basic needs, individual contribution and teamwork really establishes a climate of support and trust. This environment enables both the manager and the employee to get the most out of top level personal growth. These levels don't really represent a tiering, so finishing one, you move out to the, to the next. Our leaders and our principals really work on those basic needs of our employees and continue to meet those needs as we progress to level two and level three and so on. Per Gallup, there are 12 needs that managers can meet to improve employees' productivity and in those, these are the 12 questions that are involved in that Gallup Q12 Survey. These are listed all here. In our December 2023 All Admin Meeting, our guest Ted Nitske, CEO of CISA VI, shared some reflections with regards to our most current Gallup survey data. And that was that the Oshkosh Area School District is setting a pace in the region with CISA noticing that our scores rank highest among the larger systems they collaborate with and also that we have a 15% higher workplace engagement than the national and international workplace averages at 32%. Again, with ours percentage being 47. As a district, we now have six surveys of data to work from. So as we look at this, we are able to get all of it on one screen. We can look from the left, the left of January 2021, when we incorporated this, this Gallup survey, to the right, fall of 2023. You can see that we increased our engaged employee percentage from 32% to 47%. Those not engaged decreased from 55% to 45%. And then our actively disengaged, we also decreased from 13% down to 8%. An opportunity for improvement is the overall responses that we receive in these surveys. You can see that in January of 2021, we had just over 1,100, where in fall of 2023, we were just under 1,000. So really wanting to increase our sample, sample size to provide us with more comprehensive feedback, aiding in effective problem solving and collaboration with our employees. So one action step that, that we as a district have decided is that we're going to offer our Spring 2024 Survey during our professional development sessions on May 10th, allowing all of our employees the opportunity to take this survey, allowing us to have the most feedback that we can get from our respondents.
Good idea.
This next slide represents the years of service that our total respondents with regards to our Spring 2023 Survey. Some key findings that we found were that 72.7% of our respondents are under 10 years within the Oshkosh Area School District and then 53.3% of all respondents are less than 5%. So really showing us that we're missing a key part of our respondents being the 11-plus years of service with the district. When we pulled the same information for the Fall 2023 Survey, there wasn't much of a variance. So for instance, those under 10 years, it landed at 72% and then those under five years, it was at 53.8%.
Excellent.
As we look to the diagram on the right, it shares with us again that we offer this survey two times per year in the blue, once in the fall and once in the spring. So if we use the fall survey, we give that survey out in October and then the district and building administrators have access to their team results. They then share that information with their staff and direct reports and that's noted in the orange portion in the December, January timeframe. And then in February, May, that's when teams engage in meaningful conversation to develop an action plan based on the identified areas of improvement. So as we look at this next slide, this shows the results of the summary. So after we all complete the survey, this is what we as district leaders and principals receive in our data. So you can see Q1 all the way through question 12. So what it's sharing with us is that these two red dashes on the left with question one, I know what is expected of me at work. And low question four, in the last seven days, I've received recognition and praise for doing good work. So what this individual would do is take this information and create action plan with their employees in their areas to see how they can improve these areas with regards to question one and question four. I reached out to the principals with regards to their action plans and a few examples that they shared with me is that one principal meets with all staff members to get, to get feedback on their culture climate as they continue to make progress by asking what's going well? What needs to change? What words would you use to describe their school? And what is something that needs to be addressed immediately? Another principal directed their two lowest areas and together with their employees identified specifics that were getting in the way and things that they needed. And lastly, a principal shared that they use plus delta wonderings in all of their meetings. They changed their communication to be more cohesive and they also use a tool that we learned from Ted Nitske with regards to current state versus ideal state with the main themes within their Gallup survey data. So next are a couple of celebrations. Again, our fall survey showed that we're at 47% staff engagement district-wide, which is 15% above the national and international averages that use the Gallup Q12 Employee Engagement Survey. And then from spring 2023 to fall 2023, the district's proportion of actively disengaged decreased from 9% to 8%. An opportunity for improvement is we really need to improve our district's onboarding process. We need to incorporate a comprehensive walkthrough of the Employee Engagement Survey, sharing tools utilized to support engagement and implement regular check-ins with our employees. So really providing a direct correlation of those Q12 questions with our onboarding process. And an example of that would be to look at question two. I have the materials and equipment I need to do my work right. So our plan is to provide each employee with their position description, which shares with them all of the essential functions they're asked to complete on a daily basis. We then would look at the tools that that person would need to be successful starting day one, whether it be a Chromebook, key card, building information, directory, contact information. And then lastly, an example would be to give a blank copy of their evaluation. We give them their PDs so they know what we're asking of them. That evaluation would show how we're going to evaluate them and also create goals on opportunities for improvement. Lastly, I'd like to close with a reminder that the Oshkosh Area School District, we believe that every employee is responsible for their own engagement. We want our employees to take ownership of their engagement, to work with their colleagues and supervisor, to share ideas and take action. In this way, if all of us are working together to create an environment where we can do our best for our students.
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'll start. I like the rating scale in that we are significantly higher than national averages and still on our rating scale, it's only average. It gives us a lot of opportunities for growth and I like, I like that mindset. Our last four surveys, while, well comparatively to our peers, have plateaued.
Yeah.
Hearing from our staff members, hearing about, you know, the paras that have come, I mean, I can't help but think that that is a gigantic opportunity to fix where we may be plateaued. I guess I'd be curious to know, is that the same feeling? Are you guys seeing some areas where you think you can make some changes? Cause we'd like to see that number, you know.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. Like the, the para reference is a perfect example of, do I have the equipment I need to be successful at work?
Yeah.
So the example that Sabrina just gave, like that's, that's answering that question, right? And so what this provides us with is a common language to be able to have those questions and to be able to attach improvements then accordingly. So yeah, so I, we've got, we've got a lot of opportunities for growth, as Sabrina had talked about, just in being more deliberate with the onboarding process, more clear about expectations and evaluation process along the way. So we would expect, you know, our expectation is to be able to bust above 50%. You know, we, we've been hovering underneath that, you know, as our short-term goal and then to be able to maintain at around 60% for us is what our long-term goal is as we're moving forward. So the, the improvement plans that Sabrina was referencing, that'll happen at all levels, you know, is something that is just getting some traction right now and, and we think that's the next, the next bump for us as we're moving forward.
I think that Chromebook with the paras has gone over very well. I think that's been a big boost that I'm hoping that you guys heard as well.
We've received many emails thanking us for the opportunity to give them the resources that they need to be successful.
I mean, I'm in the schools all the time, just, you know, if it's coaching basketball or doing whatever and I had people reach out, like purposely come up and say that's been a big deal.
Great.
So I'd be curious to know, you don't have to share exactly, but I'm sure some schools did better than others. Do you guys share that information? Like what is this principal doing in this building to have higher engagement than others? And do you guys kind of workshop that between? Like here's what I do, here's what's been successful.
Yeah, best practices, right? So yeah, absolutely. So as we're looking at scores, you know, and it's one thing to, you know, we're not at a point of ranking or comparing and that type of thing, but really like, like what's, what's working really well. So we did that as part of our annual retreat in the summer to be able to share practices. We had a couple of principals just provide some, some, some relatively simple strategies, but to be able to get that out to the rest of the group. And we'll continue to do that within the principal group and within the executive team also as we're, as we're moving forward. So that, that just continues. Again, having the common language and common questions and common assessments really allows us to, to have those system-wide discussions, which are really helpful, knowing that every school's a little bit different, but from a overall standpoint, you know, employees are employees, whether they're working for the school district or for a business, like these are, these are a result of millions of questionnaires across the world that comes to these conclusions, that these are the things that our employees are looking for. And I think especially in our, in our current workforce environment, not only current, but in our future workforce environment where we have less and less people that we're choosing from, right? The pools are less and less, competing on culture is going to be at a premium. Like you have to win on culture in order to compete. And so this is one of the main areas that we're looking at cascading down as we develop our building strategic plans. There's three areas that the buildings are going to be monitoring on a front-facing public strategic plan for each building. Staff engagement is one of those, one of those three. And that'll feed right up then into the district KPI as you're looking at that.
That's great. Mrs. Heron?
Thank you. My current employer uses this survey and I was so excited when I, I know what it is, but my fellow coworkers were like, why do we have to complete that, blah, blah, blah? And I'm like, well, this is why. And I explained it to them and then more people started to complete it and then they were offering us incentives to complete it. So if you filled out the survey, your name would be into a drawing to get free whatever it is and everything. So I thought that was kind of unique because we're always looking for, to increase our survey participants and whatnot. So I don't know if you guys have any incentives or ideas, plan to get more people to fill it out, but food for thought.
That's a good piece of information. I think our, our plan right now is to go forward with offering it during professional development, allowing them the opportunity because their feedback is so important. And I think that the para opportunity for Chromebooks is really showing how their feedback and their, their sharing their information with us really got the results that they were wanting and needing to be successful.
That's great. Mr. Wright?
No matter how you measure it, significant progress has been made in this area and I'm excited to see us take the next step, you know? That's, that's super exciting. So thank you. And I like how we're measuring things and we're figuring out ways, you know, continually problem solving. It's just such an important piece to building a good culture and a good organization, you know, to never shy away from areas of improvement and to take them head-on. And I enjoyed that piece of your report, you know, reflection on where we can improve because that's so, so important in any good, any good organization. So thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Herzog?
I would agree. Culture is very important and so are working conditions. So making sure that people have the right tools and equipment is, is, is really key. One of the things that struck me today at Webster Stanley located in the former Merrill Middle Building was the positive vibe in each of the classrooms. Kids were so well behaved in, in every situation where I was, was located. And I was looking around those rooms thinking the teachers and what the teachers of Webster Stanley have had to endure this year, moving everything over to that building. As I looked around and looked at the maps and the alphabet letters on top of the whiteboards and whatever, and thinking, what are they, what are they facing then this summer with having to move things out of that building? And how does that impact the culture and the climate in that building? But to a, to a teacher today, and I send them the best kudos, along with their principal and the, the two assistant principals over there, it's, there's such a positive vibe in that building and that continues from when they were on Hazel Street over to now they're on New York Avenue. We can measure it through this, but the working conditions that those teachers have endured this year and will endure next year is monumental. So once they get into that new building and we work out some of the kinks, the same with the Val Phillips staff moving into that new building and adjusting to a new facility and where's this located and where's that and so on, I don't think can be underestimated. And those new buildings speak a great deal to, I think that, that second one, having materials and equipment. and equipment. That those learning spaces are so much improved over what they've had before, the flexibility they have, the ability for kids to create things, to work together in teams and collaborate that just wasn't there in those other buildings. So I look forward to continued growth in this area, and I think once people are settled into the Newmanominee Elementary and we're beyond year 1 in terms of Val Phillips, I would expect these numbers would go up in those buildings.
Those teachers are pumped. They are really, really excited.
Mm-hmm. Okay, let's move into staff retention.
So with staff retention, this represents 10% of the core area star rating under engagement and communication. Staff retention is defined as an organization's ability to prevent employee turnover or the number of people who leave their job in a certain period, either voluntarily or involuntarily. Staff retention refers to the strategies an organization develops to reduce staff turnover risks and processes it puts into place to retain its critical talent. Retirements are not included in this information as an indicator because the district really has limited opportunity to impact the component of this piece of staff retention. And why this matters, organizations need to keep their best employees around to thrive. The district needs to attract and retain our highly qualified staff, has a direct impact on district's ability to advance goals as a teaching and learning organization, and staff retention also has a direct and positive impact on student learning and engagement. In analyzing our turnover data for the 2022-2023 school year, we had 186 resignations out of the total count of 1,498 employees, or in other words, 12.4% turnover rate, which falls in the two-star rating here under staff retention. The reason why we use 2022-2023 data is if we pulled the information right now for 23-24, the data would be skewed because most of our resignations tend to come in the March-April-May. So we would show probably a four or five star, but as we get that information in. So that's why we always go with the previous year's information. Then in comparison, when we look at 21-22, we had 194 resignations out of 1,479 employees with a turnover rate of 13.1. So we show that there's been some progress made, but with this two-star rating, you can see we have a lot of opportunity for growth here.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
So what does that compare us to? Like, what is, is there data that's shared for, like, comparing us to other districts? Like, what's a normal turnover rate for staff?
I have not personally pulled any of that information, but I for surely can and share.
I just wonder if, I mean, I know, I think it's probably more readily available for certain positions, like teachers or that kind of thing, but I just wonder in general, I would love to know kind of where that.
I for surely can pull that.
I mean, it's, in the business world, that's not a terrible number, right? Like, I think average may be higher, I could be wrong, but from what I've seen lately where I am, but I just would love to see. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
I just Googled it, and Google says the average education turnover rate is 12.4. So that would put us under average, right?
Right, yeah. Right on the.
Yeah, right on the, yeah, average, yeah.
Do you analyze those data in terms of years of service? I know for a long time, there's been a predictor that in the first five years is when you see a good deal of people leaving the profession or leaving for another area, whether that's because they had a child or a spouse, got a job somewhere else. But do you track that by years of service in any way?
We haven't, but it's for surely something that we can start to pull, to start to record whether, what years of service they're in.
I have heard that too. It's like that three-to-five-year mark, right, is kind of the key to get them to stick. So, yeah.
Which is typical, yeah, usually within five years, then they usually stay.
Yeah.
But I think teachers as a whole have a high turnover rate, and that's because of the value that we need, that we're currently placing on teachers. Like, we need to do a better job of giving our teachers resources, funding, et cetera, et cetera, because our teachers have taken a huge hit in the past few years. So that leads to turnover too, right? So it's not, it's a lot of factors, is I guess what I'm saying, that lead to turnover, not just.
Absolutely. Some celebrations. The district will be using information that we obtained during our state interviews with our employees to address concerns proactively leading to more engaged and motivated workforce. And most recently, we have given access to the CalM app to all of our employees, really addressing the need that we heard with regards to the support of their well-being. And an opportunity for improvement, again, is improving our onboarding process. For all our new employees to cultivate a positive employee experience, the district is committed to fostering early engagement and connection, connecting new hires with the district's vision and mission, and actively seeking feedback throughout the onboarding process to identify areas that we can improve.
I think this is where I really see a correlation between the two reports tonight. We're talking about staff engagement and retention. They're really, you know, we expect to be able to see a relationship between the improvement of one and the reduction of the other as we move forward.
Do you think that some of it is expectations that have come through the KPIs, and people know exactly what is expected of them, and that may be different than it was before, and maybe a different career is more suited for them, given what's happening now?
Yeah, I mean, my sense is we're probably a year or two out from really assessing that as we would get to, I think, this coming year as we roll out the building strategic plans and are really, you know, specific around, you know, our literacy measures, SCL data. I would expect that to be something that we could definitely take a look at that difference.
Because we've put a lot on teachers. I mean, just, the world puts a lot on teachers, and so that will be kind of interesting to see. But also, we've talked about how those expectations have led to consistency and knowledge of teachers of what's expected.
And that's, and the word that we continue to use is clarity, you know, from the executive team, and that clarity provides, you know, I know what is expected to me at work, which is the number-one question for student, or for staff engagement. So the more clarity we can provide within our processes and the system, the better that, the more staff engagement we're going to have, higher number, and then reducing this retention. It may result in people being clear that they don't want to be here.
Right.
I, I'm putting my money on is that it's going to have a much more positive effect for the people that might just be in a gray area and just like, listen, I just need to know what I need to do and not do, and go to work. That's where I think we're going to get a big lift as we're moving throughout the next couple of years.
Clarity is huge. Absolutely. Okay. Mr. Wright?
What teachers tell me, when I talk to them quite a bit, the most important thing to them is who the building head is. You know what I mean? Who the principal is, and how that interaction is, and how that culture's built within that And some of this data might be helpful in measuring some of that.
Absolutely. When we look to the second piece here that I'll be going over in the exit survey, some of those top themes are, the second one is the relationship with their supervisor in their building or the department.
So I've been in the same job for 15 years, and I haven't really even looked to leave it, just because I really like my boss and the culture. We probably have 100 people in my department, and rarely does anyone ever leave. And it has a lot to do with how well you like your supervisor and your boss and the culture. So I think this all just kind of links together. That's my comment.
Any other comments?
So then we look to the progress that we, the work we have in progress. So we're conducting our state interviews to understand and address factors influencing employees' retention, so really looking at the reason why employees stay with the district. We're also conducting exit interviews to gather feedback and insight from departing employees to improve organizational processes and address potential issues. So really finding out why people leave the district. Enhancing our new hire orientation is shared in both as an opportunity for improvement with support from the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion to ensure all employees feel connected and supported. Prioritizing work-life balance by providing and following clear expectations and employee email communication, response times and availability. Conducting position compensation and analysis by employee group. And then, as shared already, continuously reviewing and enhancing our benefits package to meet the needs of our employees. So most recently, again, partnering with CalM, giving our access to our employees, supporting their well-being. So in closing, we're excited about the work that we're doing, and we're excited to come back next year to share that our retention rates went up along with our engagement results as well.
Thank you. Very informative.
I'd say I really like that there's a lot of this that's being done proactively, and it's not reactive. So the action steps and the things that we're, you know, I support and I'm happy that the paras felt comfortable enough and cared as much as they do, because many times people just leave a job if they aren't interested. And for a lot of that, I'm just pointing that out because that was recent, but for people that are willing to say something, you know, they care a lot about this district and working here. And the last three items specifically, the work-life balance. Dr. Davis, I think your message at Convocation this year has really been well-received.
I thought that was awesome.
I think a lot of that's gone over very well, from my understanding, and it'll only get better as time goes on, right? And, but the benefits in that compensation discussion is an important one, one that I personally feel is kind of the next step of where we go to try to, you know, really take care of our team. So, so thank you for putting this together, sharing it tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
I like that it's a, that we're meeting it head-on and not being afraid of the answers that we get. So thank you very much, Sabrina.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving into the consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board's been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed a previous meeting. It's to be acted on with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it'll be pulled from the consent agenda and voted on separately.
I move approval of the consent resolution agenda. Herzog.
Herzog, Carlin?
Yes.
Call the rule. Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Request for future agenda items. Anything? Any announcements? Dr. Herzog?
I have two. Thank you. The WASB is sponsoring a law conference on February 29th in Appleton. They don't usually get much closer than that, so if you have an interest in learning more about school law, that's a great opportunity. You can see Sherri to get signed up. And secondly, CISA 6 is again offering a program called Women Leading Wisconsin. However, we believe in equity and inclusion, so anyone is invited to attend, but the focus is on women as leaders in Wisconsin. Thank you.
And we will now be adjourning to executive session for two reasons. The first one is.
I move to waive the reading of the executive session.
Call the rule. Carlin?
Aye.
Dewitt?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Carlin? Aye.
Motion carries.
Then I move to.
We will adjourn to executive session.
Get to it on that. So I moved it.
I'll second.
That's right. Carlin and Dewitt?
Yep. Kelly?
Kelly? Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Wyman? Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned to executive session.
Thank you.
Your video.